I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Fountain and Planning Commission to order the 17th day of April, 6:00 PM here at 300 Wall Street. First item denied is approval of minutes from our March the 20th meeting. Do I have a motion? We approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor by uplifting their hand? All those opposed? All right. First item on the docket denied is docket number SP-2025-02. We'll hear from staff.
Thank you very much this evening. I'm sure you remember that recent... Recently, the hotel site right next to the cotton mill that just opened up a few months back, that site and where the hotel's going to go just went through the rezoning process to a flexible review district. As such, when it's time for them to have their development plan approved, it must come to the Planning Commission as a final development plan. So this is just a little locator here with the current zoning. I keep wanting to hit the rob buttons. I apologize. There we go. The site plan that's being presented tonight is identical to the concept plan that was presented at the time of rezoning, and that is what's being presented as the final development plan for your review this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll hear from our applicant.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Charles Barkley. I'm with Breakwater on behalf of Baker Commercial Properties and Fountain Inn Hotel Partners. As staff has said, this is the identical site plan that was reviewed in, I believe it was November. So there's been no changes whatsoever. You know, ultimately, the rezoning was pursued for sort of economic purposes internally. So as far as the use is concerned, we have agreed to restrict the use to only a hotel on the site. You know, the parking would otherwise comply with, and I believe it was C2? Yeah, the parking would otherwise comply with C2. The use would otherwise comply with C2. So it's a pretty straightforward submission at this point. You know, I think in November, the only controversy was the location of the dumpster, which I think we sort of decided that it was in the ideal location for the setup of the site. But other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions. But as I say, this is the identical plan that we presented to you back in November.
Any questions for our applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll now open the floor for public comment. Seeing none, we'll close the floor to public comment. We'll hear the staff's recommendation.
Thank you. As mentioned, this is the same plan. That dumpster location you mentioned was covered in the statement of intent to be able to allow it to locate where it is. It was the best location. But looking through the plan, it matches the concept, matches the statement of intent, and so it's staff's recommendation that it be approved.
Jason, are staff happy with all of the materials and whatnot that our applicant is using?
We are.
For facade? Okay. Any discussion from the commission? Any comments? Okay. All right. Easy enough. Do I have a motion that the Planning Commission approve the final development plan for SP-2025-02 at 300 Jones Street?
I'll make that motion for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor by uplifting their hand? All those opposed? Eyes have. Second item on our agenda tonight is docket, is a resolution 2025-03. We'll hear from staff.
So this is a new one for you guys. The city has retained Tischler Vice to do an impact fee analysis, and at this time, council has asked that it be before the Planning Commission for a recommendation on approval. You were given the entire study in your meeting materials. I did print one copy. Chairman has it if somebody needs it during the discussion. It is available. But that's what we're looking for today is a recommendation of approval for it to go to council.
Thanks, sir. I have a couple of questions. Are there exceptions to these impact fees?
So I would, I'd probably, I recommend that we allow the consultants here tonight to kind of go into what this is. His presentation for everybody to may answer your questions.
My bad.
It's okay.
Now I'll hear from the consultant. Jump the gun. My apologies.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Carson Vice, President of Tischler Vice. I assume this is my clipper here?
It is.
As Jason mentioned... Toward you? Okay. There we go. There we go. As Jason mentioned, the South Carolina statute, and it's the only statute in the country that requires that the impact fee study go through the Planning Commission for a resolution for recommendation for consideration by the city council. And it makes sense on the surface because people forget that, or they associate impact fees with revenue, but actually, an impact fee is actually a land use regulation. So it makes sense that it would come to the Planning Commission. And I'll talk a little bit about impact fee, the Impact Fee Act in South Carolina here in a second. A little bit about us, we're based in Bethesda, Maryland, in Boise, Idaho. We focus on cost of growth issues, mainly impact fees and infrastructure financing strategies, as well as fiscal and economic impact analysis. And we've done more of that type of work than anybody in the country, and we've certainly done more impact fee work in the state of South Carolina, and our impact fee clients are listed here. A little bit about impact fees in general, they are a one-time payment. So this is not something that's assessed against the folks that already live here. It's when I'm a developer or an applicant that comes through the door for a residential or non-residential building permit, I'm being asked to offset the demands for growth-related infrastructure caused by my development project. So they are one-time in nature. They are for capacity projects in the city. We can't use impact fees for roof replacements or put them into the general fund and subsidize operations with it. We can't use them for personnel. It's basically a contractual arrangement between the city and the developer, and by the developer paying the fee, the city's agreeing to expand the infrastructure footprint in order to accommodate new development. So as part of the analysis, we have to basically meet three prongs of a legal test. One is the study has to show the nexus between development and the need for infrastructure. We have to show geographic benefit or benefit, and we show that two ways. One is geographically through, you know, we have to assess whether we need to establish what we call collection expenditure zones or benefit zones in a jurisdiction the size of Fountain Inn. We don't have to do that. You're providing things on a citywide level of service. The second aspect of benefit is the timing of the expenditure, and sometimes the Impact Fee Act dictates when you have to spend the money. But the idea here is that we just don't collect money and sit on it for 10 or 15 years. We have to spend the money in an appropriate time so that the, or the fee payer receives that benefit. In South Carolina, we have to spend the money within three years of the planned date of the capital improvement, and I'll talk a little bit about that here in a second. And then the third prong of the legal test is we have to show proportionality. So that's why in the fee study you see before you, we're just, we just don't have a residential fee and a non-residential fee. We have to differentiate single-family versus multifamily. We have to differentiate retail versus office versus industrial, et cetera, because, for instance, single-family units typically have more people than a multifamily unit, so they have to pay a commensurately more, or a commensurately greater amount based on those demand indicators. Also, they generate more vehicle trips. So if we were doing a road impact fee, they would have a higher road impact fee because of those higher vehicle trips. So that's what we mean by proportionality. I'll dive briefly here into methodology, but there's essentially three ways we can calculate the fee, and the way to think about it is the past, the present, and the future. So when we look to the past, we call that a cost recovery or a buy-in method, and the idea here is that the jurisdiction is oversized infrastructure. A great example of that is if we were doing a wastewater fee and you had a wastewater or wastewater treatment station, and it was designed for 5 million gallons a day, and it's currently operating at 3, new development's buying into that excess 2 million gallons of capacity. Okay? When we look to the future, we call that a plan-based approach, and that's usually based on some sort of adopted master plan and, more importantly, an adopted funding strategy with it. And so the idea here is that we may get a higher impact fee, but we're exposing the general fund because by accepting that first dollar, we have to build that CIP, whether the impact fee revenue is there or not. So if there's a recession, general fund's going to be left holding the bag, so to speak. So by far, the most popular method is that middle method, what we call the consumption-based approach or incremental expansion approach, and it's somewhat formulaic in terms of, it looks at your infrastructure systems in terms of, like, for instance, with parks, the number of acres per person. What does it cost us to buy an acre? What does it cost us to improve an acre? And the fee is calculated that way versus saying, hey, we're going to build these five parks. This is what it's going to cost. This is what the funding arrangements are going to be. We're just going to collect the money and incrementally expand the park system as growth comes in the door. So if growth is slower, we just have to build fewer parks. If it's faster than what we projected, then we're building more parks. But the revenue will be there regardless, and there's less general fund exposure. So I mentioned Impact Fee Acts. There are 29 Impact Fee Acts in the country right now. South Carolina is one of those. Most impact fees are quite similar, but there are a few things that stand out about South Carolina I wanted to talk about. One is, I mentioned this earlier, most Impact Fee Acts just say you have to spend the money within five years or seven years or 10 years. South Carolina is a little bit different. It says three years of the scheduled date of the planned expenditure. So for instance, if you're planning on building the park in 28, or 2028, we have to spend impact fee money on that park by 2031. There is some confusion about that in the state. Some people think it means that if I pay an impact fee tomorrow, you have to spend the money I paid within three years. No, it's just three years from the date of the expenditure. All Impact Fee Acts require that you establish or publish an annual report, and that can be as simple as saying, hey, we took in X amount of dollars in park impact fees, we spent Y amount of dollars, and here's our balance going forward. The real unique part of this South Carolina act is this bottom bullet point, and it's the only act in the country that requires this. It requires an analysis that estimates the effect of imposing the impact fees on the availability of affordable housing in the city. But the act doesn't give you much guidance on that at all. It doesn't provide any sort of benchmarks or ratios to establish affordability. It doesn't have any remediation requirements. If we determine that it will have an effect on affordable housing, it just says you have to do an analysis. And so the types of analyses that are done are vary greatly from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. Another thing we should talk about is the need for credits. Okay? And there are two types of credits. The first one is a site-specific credit, and that's usually worked out by a development agreement between the jurisdiction and the developer. So the idea here is that if we're planning to purchase land for a fire station and build a new fire station, and the developer gives you a donation as part of their development project, two acres for a fire station, there needs to be a development agreement that makes that fee payer whole. So they're going to, you're going to discount the fee or work out some arrangements so that they're not paying the impact fee but also giving you the property. Okay? The second type of credit is baked into the methodology, so to speak. So we have to guard against new development paying twice, once through the fee and then again through future stream of revenue, like, for instance, some jurisdictions in South Carolina have a sales tax that's dedicated toward transportation. So if we're going to use that sales tax and the impact fees to build certain roads, we need to discount the impact fee for that revenue stream. Likewise, if we're going to do, if we have existing debt service or we're going to issue future bonds for, again, I'll use fire as an example, for future fire stations, and I'm paying you the impact fee, but I'm also going to be generating property tax that you're going to use to pay down the bonds, we need to give a credit within the methodology. So those types of credits are already baked into the numbers, so to speak. So as part of establishing that nexus, we have to make, we have to determine your development base here in terms, excuse me, today, in terms of number of housing units, number of people, number of jobs, and the amount of non-residential square footage. Then we also have to make that projection going forward, and we are projecting, from a residential perspective, an additional 10,350 persons, and that's equivalent of about 4,000, 4,180 new homes over the next 10 years. From a non-residential perspective, we are projecting approximately 7,460 additional jobs, and that would occupy about, it looks like 1.13 million square feet of additional non-residential space. Now, going into each individual fee, let's start with police. The methodology we use is that flexible consumption-based or incremental expansion method. There are two components. One is station space and equipment, specifically dispatch consoles. It is important to note in South Carolina, any type of infrastructure we have in the study has to have a value of at least $100,000. So in most states, we could include police cars, but in South Carolina, we can't, in most jurisdictions. So if we apply the level of service standards that we calculated based on your current assets compared to your current demand base that you have, and apply that to that projection of population and employment we just saw, we are projecting that the 10-year demand for new growth on police space is about almost 6,000 square feet of additional space at a cost of about almost $2.4 million. Now, Fountain Inn could choose to build 10,000 square feet of additional police space. However, new growth's only going to pay for about 5,600 of that, right? So that additional space means that you've elevated your level of service over what it is today, and you can't expect new growth to correct those existing deficiencies. Same applies to dispatches. Two and a half dispatch consoles will be demanded over the 10 years at a cost of about $250,000, or $250,000. So in terms of the fees, we work our way down from the top to the bottom. The top shows our cost per person, cost per vehicle trip for police, for the facilities and the equipment. We then multiply those costs per person by the number of persons, or the average persons per housing unit in Fountain Inn to get a fee of $521 for a single-family unit, $444 for a multifamily unit. From a non-residential perspective, commercial retail generates the largest fee on a per-thousand square foot basis at $834, followed by institutional uses at 509, office at 370, and industrial at $166 per thousand square feet. Now, when we look at those fees compared to the projection of housing units and non-residential square footage, you can see that we're expecting that you would have about 2.6 million in expenditures that we discussed, and then the impact fee revenue approximates that at $2.6 million. So there's no general fund money being required in order to meet growth demands. However, as I mentioned, if you choose to go above and beyond that, then the general fund would have to contribute. Turning to fire, same method, that consumption-based approach. The components are space as well as additional pieces of apparatus. The 10-year demand there is about 8,736, or 8,736 square feet at a cost of about 4.36 million, nine pieces of apparatus at about 4.2 million dollars. This is the fire service area. As you may know, the fire serves an area outside of Fountain Inn for which we cannot, unless Fountain Inn worked out an interlocal agreement with the county, you're not going to be collecting impact fee revenue from those units, which will be reflected when you see the cash flow. This shows the draft impact fees. It's $1,283 per single-family unit compared to $1,096 for a multifamily unit. Again, just like police, commercial and retail properties generate the highest fee for non-residential, slightly over 2,000, followed by institutional, office, and finally, industrial. And when we look at the cash flow, we see that the projected demand is about $8.5 million, but we're only going to collect about $6.4 million in impact fee revenue. So that delta between expenditures and revenue is from the development that happens or the demand that occurs from outside of Fountain Inn for which you are not collecting impact fees. Parks and Rec, again, consumption-based approach. The components here are lands and improvements. 10-year demand is about 21 and a half acres at $536,000 and 324 improvements at a cost of about $4.9 million. The fee here is assessed only against residential development. Single-family fee is $1,333, multifamily fee is $1,138. Cash flow here, similar to police. Revenue is approximate expenditures, so 5.4 million in expenditures, 5.4 million in revenue. And then this table here summarizes the, all three fees. So the total freight for a single-family unit is 3137 compared to 2678 for multifamily, retail's at 2889 per thousand, institutional 1763 per thousand, office at 1282 per thousand, and industrial at 576 per thousand. And finally, and this is a little hard to read from here, but we did a fee comparison of if Fountain Inn were to adopt 100% of the maximum justifiable amounts, when we compare it to other jurisdictions in the region that do have impact fees, you can see here that you were on, in the bottom 25% in terms of the total cost burden that would add to a single-family unit. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, so the first one I had, I saw where you talked about credits. There's always exceptions to the rule. What are, what are the exceptions going to be in lieu of the impact fee?
Well, that's a, that's a loaded question. It depends on what you mean by exceptions. When I think of exceptions, I think of waivers or exemptions, right? Where, and generally, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but I've been involved in a lot of impact fee cases around the country as an expert witness, and generally, we have to, you have to guard against equal protection issues. So we can't discriminate against land uses. So we can't say that we want to assess residential development 100% of the fees, but only 25% of the fees for non-residential development. Or within non-residential development, say, like in Arizona, we've got clients because retail is king there, that's the, that's the primary revenue source for cities, as they say, well, can we exempt retail but charge office and industrial? No, because we're discriminating against land use. That being said, if you do waive fees in support of some sort of policy, and that policy typically has to be stated in comprehensive plan or an economic development plan or some sort of financial document that's pursuing or helping accommodate some sort of policy, like affordable housing, right? Or certain types of jobs that you're trying to go after, you can waive the fees. The caveat is that you have to make that money up from another source. So if you waive 800,000 in fees, you've got to find $800,000 to make the CIP whole.
So for instance, Mr. Chairman, if the city of Fountain Inn's economic development strategy was that we wanted to start recruiting corporate headquarters, which would be great. If you were to get a corporate headquarters here, that may fall in line with that policy to where that would be a waiver. But again, you would then want to waive impact fees for all corporate headquarters that were relocating there. The picking and choosing is what...
Exactly.
Mr. Vice is talking about equal protection issues.
What about historic properties that have some tax-exempt status to begin with?
This is new construction.
Even on a historic piece of property? I mean...
So we're not typically talking about remodels or additions. The additions to a, to a single-family house could potentially trigger a portion of an impact fee, but we're typically talking about greenfield development, so brand-new construction going vertical.
And this includes things like affordable housing?
Well, there are some exemptions in the South Carolina act for affordable housing.
Affordable housing, okay.
Again, that could be a policy strategy that the city Fountain Inn were, was, would to take would be, you know, if an affordable housing project was meeting, you know, a certain percentage of AMI or whatever, then that could be a policy decision that city council wanted to make. But if, you know, the idea of, hey, we're, you know, we feel like we have too many fast-food chicken restaurants, and so we're not, you know, we're not going to waive impact fees for that. Well, you can't really do it like that then. You know, it's got to be some sort of equal playing field.
I mean, are we scared this is going to inhibit economic growth for us?
I've been doing this 34 years, and the majority of our, I think we've got 92 impact fee jobs going right now, and 60-something of those are repeat clients. They wouldn't keep, they wouldn't be on their fifth or sixth impact fee study if impact fees were discouraging development.
Has this been implemented in any municipalities in our general area?
Clinton, Inman, Greer...
Greer and Easley are the...
Easley, yeah, easily done, yes.
Are the closest in the upstate, or in the upstate region that have adopted them. I will say, to kind of back up on how we got here, if you all remember Envision, the comprehensive plan, we had a whole list of, these are the top next steps. We've been very diligent about that since February of '24 in checking items off of that to-do list. One of the top ones was to rewrite our zoning and land development regulations. We're in that process now. One was to continue the streetscape on Main Street. We're right in the midst of that. Another one of the recommendations was to look at an impact fee study. And so that's, that's where we're at. We've conducted the study and presenting that to Planning Commission and then to city council for either approval, denial, or amended.
It seems to me, though, that impact fees, especially residentially, are going to overinflate housing costs as builders and developers are just going to take the impact fee and pass that along to the buyers. I mean, in the other markets that you've operated in, have you seen, I would say, more than 25% cost increase on homes in the area because of this?
So it depends on what sort, what economy we're in, in terms of who pays the fee. Now, obviously, when we're in a robust housing market, more than 100% of the impact fee is being passed on because the developer has carrying costs, right? In soft markets, everybody's paying a portion. The farmer that sells the 1,000-acre farms has taken less per acre. Developer's taken less profit, and then the purchaser's paying part of it, right? It just depends on what market. But we have to keep this in perspective, and I don't, and I don't mean to denigrate the impact of the fee, but when we're talking about a $3,000 fee on a mortgage over 30 years, and the math is in the back of the report, I think it's like $18 a month on a mortgage. So it's not, so when we talk about it in terms of the real number, the $3,000, it sounds like a lot, right? But there's a reason why, as I meant, going back to the previous question about economic development, I mean, there is a reason the housing market, or people want to live in your community, there's a reason why businesses want to locate in your community from residential perspective, it's, you know, quality of life, it's quality of schools, et cetera, et cetera. From, from a non-residential perspective, you know, jurisdictions have competitive advantages from a transportation perspective or an educated workforce perspective, but there's a reason they want to be there, right? And unless your impact fees are a complete outlier, right? And I mean by outlier, everybody in the region's $3,000 to $10,000 a house, and you're $90,000 a house, that's going to, that's going to have an influence, right? But generally speaking, they are not a deterrent to developments.
But it's just not an impact fee. I mean, we're paying permit fees, we're paying sewer fees, we're paying all these fees. By the time you get to that, you're over $10,000 in fees before you can even break ground. And I'm a small builder in town. That'll break you. That'll make you raise the prices up. But like you just said, I mean, we're already paying a ton of fees as it is. I just...
Speed is only assessed on a...
New construction.
A new construction, right?
It's paid at the time of building permit.
Building permit, so before issuance, they've got to pay the impact fee.
Correct. In order to obtain a building permit, that's when that impact fee would be paid in South Carolina and in most states.
So the developer is paying it, not the homeowner? That's what I was wondering. Is it going to be a tax bill? Is it going to be...
No, it's whoever pulls the building permit pays the fee along with the cap fees and everything else.
Yeah, but I'm like wondering how we're going to collect this from people, but you're getting it from the developer. Who was building it.
I recently had built a new construction home... I recently had built a new construction home, and, you know, I'm a nerd and looked through our permitting software, and it was Ryan Holmes that pulled the permit. Whereas, you know, I was here when the property was annexed, and the developer didn't pay for it per se, but the builder is the one that pulled that permit.
Developer is sort of used interchangeably. It's really the builder, right? Whoever pulls the permit.
Yeah, so when you pull the permit, like if you were to pull a permit on your house, let's say you want to build a house straight from ground up. You go to Fountain Inn to pull a permit. They're going to charge you that impact fee. They're going to charge you the permit fee, and then they're going to charge you sewer and water fees. And then that's when you pay it, and then they hand you the permit.
All of it upfront, but only one time.
Yes, on each house.
Right.
How is this going to work for stuff that, if approved by a city council and adopted, resolution's adopted? What, will that only apply to things that are new? Or will that apply to things that are currently in tug, like that are not completed, that have applications in but not yet permits issued?
Great question.
Like, are we going to?
Great question. So some of that has to do with the policy that the council decides to enact. So in general, if you haven't pulled your, if you've got a master plan that's been approved, but you haven't pulled the building permits, generally, you're going to pay the fee. If you've already pulled the permit, you wouldn't. But one of the considerations, particularly in jurisdictions that are going from 0 to 60, meaning that you don't have impact fees today, right? And you're implementing a new program. A lot of times jurisdictions give consideration to the fact that a lot of the development community have gotten, secured financing based on certain conditions, and those conditions didn't include impact fees. And so they get phased in over a one- or two-year period kind of type of thing.
Yeah, that was a good question, Mr. Chairman. Now, I had that, I had a similar question, is when, how would all this start up and work? But I have a couple other questions, if I could. And this one, this one might be for Mr. Nudson. I know the museum folks are reworking the Jones Mill. And when I was looking at the detailed document that you sent out, that, is that going to be considered a city-owned park? Or is that, is that going to be privately held by the museum and maintained by them?
It is in the city limits of Fountain Inn, but it is not a city-owned park.
Okay, I noticed it wasn't on the list, so, okay. That was a question. And then the other thing is, I think if you talk to most people here, they would want to know what, I mean, I agree, you know, with the parks, the fire, police, that's an important thing to deal with. But most people are really sensitive about traffic. And I realize that's a much, it's a little different conversation. And you did kind of allude to it a little bit, but there's no consideration of doing that.
Well, that's a great question, and there are, we have done some transportation impact fees in South Carolina, but the real question has been, is, we asked the question when we talked to Fountain Inn in the beginning, is have you traditionally been in the road-building business? And the answer's no, right? It's been rehab of streets and that sort of thing. So, but if that condition were to change and the city were expected to, you know, build additional capacity projects, then impact fees may be something you may want to pursue in the future.
Yeah, I'm talking about, you know, turn lanes, street, you know, traffic control lights and stuff like that. But I reviewed your numbers. They seem reasonable. I know nobody likes, nobody likes fees, but again, if you're going to pay, you know, $300,000 for a home around here or more, you know, I don't necessarily see a problem with that kind of fee. Thank you.
Any further questions from the commission?
Mr. Pease, I would say the biggest misconception with the general public regarding roads, transportation, is the fact that this cannot be used to fix potholes. This cannot be used to repair roads.
Right.
It's going to be the construction of new roads or potentially, you know, those new intersections, new turn lanes. Well, if you look at, in the case of Fountain Inn, where those would be applicable are not even roads that the city owns. Those are almost generally always South Carolina Department of Transportation.
Right, I, I've gotten an education on the roads down here. So I totally concur with what you just said.
Anything further? Is this considered a public hearing? Do I need to open this to the floor?
It is.
Okay, we'll now open the floor for public comment. Say none, closed floor to public comment. Your staff's recommendation.
Thank you. As mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, we do feel that the criteria for the study to be completed has been met. And so it's staff's recommendation that the planning commission recommend approval of the resolution.
Sir? Any other comments?
Where do our permit fees go now for building?
Can you be more specific?
Like our permitting for home building permitting fees? Where do they, where do those go? Where are those applied to for the city budgeting?
So that's a general fund that it goes into, I would say, you know, the bulk of building permit fees are used to pay for plan reviews and the building inspection through our third party. But then, you know, any additional is going to be, you know, for staff time and things of that nature. But that is not a, it's not an enterprise account as, or enterprise fund as similar to natural gas or sewer. It's, you know, business license, building permit fees, property taxes. Those all are going into the general fund.
And do those support the police and the fire department? Is that part of the fund that where they are dispersed to?
I think that's a bit of a loaded question. You know, so every year, and we're right in that budget process now. So what we do is we project our revenues and base our expenses in our budget off of what those revenues are. So if we anticipate $2 million in revenue, then by state law, we can only have $2 million in expenses. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Anything further?
I have one more question. I know the plan is to build a third fire station, new city hall. Police will be in new city hall, right? In a new building? It's like, are the, is this something that we're trying to do so we can cover the cost of that? Or is that going to happen regardless?
I mean, I would say the city is in the programming design phase for a new municipal complex for a city hall, police, and fire. We have not gotten to the point where we've started looking at how are we going to pay for it? This could be an avenue. There's no way it would pay for all of it.
But it would be a lot.
Fire Station 3 is already paid for. Funding's already secured for that.
Anything further? Well, I'm not super happy with the content contained therein. I am fully confident that passes along to council and let them sort it out. They passed it us, and I think that it was executed. We have done the study. Information has been provided. Now it's up to council to determine whether or not it's something they want to go to work with, so. Do I have a motion that the planning commission recommend approval of resolution 2025-03?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, bow up with a finger in hand. All those opposed? Do we have that documented?
We do.
Okay. Seeing nothing further on the agenda tonight, do I hear a motion that we adjourn? I like that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, bow up with a finger in hand. We adjourn.